Hi, and welcome to the March Board Wrap-Up Show with Superintendent Dr. Pennington. And as we get our show started, a lot of things that I know Dr. Pennington wants to talk about, but we are recording our show on the verge of a not seven, but a 10-day break for the students as well, kind of an oddity, but I know the students enjoy that. Teachers are going to get some time off as well.
Yeah, I think we made a lot of kids happy when the board made a decision last month to make a change in our calendar and actually give our students off the Friday before spring break. And that may help some parents who are, you know, planning, I know a lot of people go skiing this time of year, and so they can maybe get out of here a little bit earlier than they normally do and not have to drive overnight to get to a ski slope in Colorado someplace. I understand with all the moisture we've had out west that there's going to be lots of snow this year, and so I'm happy for those people that get to go do that.
Fortunately, we did not see that snow this year as well.
Yes.
A mild winter it was. It's going to be a great spring, and we do wish everybody a happy spring break. Dr. Pennington, I know there's a lot of money issues that you want to discuss with your viewers today. We'll develop a few questions, and I'm just going to open it up and see where we are as far as our funding is concerned.
Well, last week, we got our latest round of bad news in that the state declared another revenue failure. And so state budgets were reduced 4% across the state, all state agencies. And so for us, that meant that our state aid was reduced another $300,000, and that's rounded up. I mean, I think it's $285,000 or something like that. So that $300,000 combined with the $200,000 reduction we took in January means that our state aid for schools, for our district, is $500,000 less than it was when we started the school year in January. In addition to that, we were informed that our flex benefit allowance, that's the money that pays health insurance for all our employees, that that fund was being reduced another $200,000. And the way the law, the way that works is the law says that health insurance will be paid for teachers, support employees. And so when the state, when they don't have money to do that, they've cut their appropriation to us, and that requires the local district to pay that balance. So it's not like if there's a cut that the employee pays it, the school district pays it. So that's another $200,000 of revenue that we don't have that we anticipated. On top of that, you know, and I hate to, you know, Phil, I know these things get very complicated for people, but we receive a portion of auto registration revenue, auto-tag money. In fact, we get, school districts get 36% of that revenue. And it's a kind of a complicated formula, but they made a change in that last year, and they told us that we were going to be held harmless, that we'd get the same amount of money that we got the year before. There's not as many new cars being bought, and so auto-tag revenue is down compared to what it was this time of year ago. When they made the change in the law, some language was not put in that had been in the law previously, and it's kind of left the Tax Commission in limbo and gave them some leeway in how they distribute auto-tag money. The result of the decisions that have been made at the Tax Commission because of what was not added in legislation last year is that our auto-tag revenue at this time is $300,000 less than it was the year before. So now we're up to right at $1 million less in revenue that we had, that we were told we were going to get July 1st when this fiscal year started. So that's problem number one, okay? We have less revenue than we told we were going to have. We anticipate that there will be another revenue failure before the end of the fiscal year. Whether that'll be another 1% or 2%, we don't know. But the big issue in all this is, is next year. So the way that we think about school money, not counting our auto-tag issue, which doesn't affect everybody the same, we're one of the districts in the state that's been hurt the most by this, we have about $80 less per weighted ADM than we were told we were going to have. Everything that I see coming out of Oklahoma City leads me to believe that when you look at the cut we've had now and what the cut will be for the '16-'17 school year, that that total cut's going to be $200 a weighted ADM. So another $120 per student on top of what we've taken so far. So for us, that would be about $1,600,000 less revenue that we would have in July of 2017 than we had in July of 20, or July 2016 than we had July 2015. So we're trying to stop the bleeding right now and then try to make decisions about what our budget's going to look like for next year, knowing that we're going to have to reduce our expenditures about $1.6 million. Now, compounding that is that we still, even when we got our money back in July of 2015, we were, still had less money per student than we had in the 2008-2009 school year. And I've talked about that before. Right at $198 per kid less. So the reality is this, when we start school next year, if you look at the amount of funding that we had supporting our students in the 2008-2009 school year and what we're going to have supporting students in the 2016-'17 school year, we're going to be in the neighborhood of $400 less per weighted ADM. Now, we have 8,200 students, 8,300 kids when we wait students. So, you know, our viewers can do the math. We're looking at about $3.2 million, $3.3 million less to run our school system in 2016-'17 than we had in 2008-2009. And we had more kids than we had then. So it's just, it just is brutal. It's going to cause us to make some decisions that we don't want to make. It's going to cause us to make cuts in programs that we don't want to cut. It's going to cause us to make staffing cuts that we don't want to make. And, you know, I hear all the time, "We ought to run schools like a business." Well, what business cuts its services to its customers when it has more customers than it's ever had before? You know, it's not like we've lost kids or we're, we have less demand for programs or we have less demand for classes. That's not what's happened here. We just have, and it's not like, you know, usually when businesses, if you think about what's happened in the oil industry right now, they've had, they're laying off employees because they don't have as much demand for their product as they had before. We don't have any less demand for our product. Our demand is still where it's always been. So it's just really, it's just an odd situation to be in. It's because of some very bad decisions that were made in Oklahoma City. They, for whatever reason, because you see this all the time, members of the legislature want to say, "Well, you can't hold us, don't be mad at us. It's not our fault that the price of oil fell from $100 a barrel to $30 a barrel." I'm born in Oklahoma, have lived in Oklahoma almost my entire life. What I know is this, is the price of oil goes up and the price of oil goes down. And when you, if you make, you'd always better have in the back of your mind that this decision I'm making today, if I'm making it because the price of oil is $60 a barrel, or it's $100 a barrel, or it's $140 a barrel, or it's $200 a barrel, it can be less than that. And we've been proving that lesson once again in this state.
Is it too early to speculate or to have information on any cuts that you're going to make?
Well, here's what we know, okay? We cannot cut at the elementary level any more than we have. Our class sizes at the elementary schools are already way larger than any of us want them to be. We already have, different places, the cost of districts, we have 30 kids in an elementary class, we have 25, we have 27, you know. We're way above the class size limit of 20. Where we are not above class size limits is at the secondary level. And so if you go back, and we still, even though '10-'17 has been basically written out of law by the legislature, they've said that since 2010, we don't have to abide by '10-'17, we still use that as our guideline. And that's the one that says that elementary classroom is 20 kids in a class at the secondary level, the secondary teacher, that the most students they should see is 140. And we don't, we have very few secondary teachers anywhere close to that. So what that means is, is that any, that the cuts we make, and there will be cuts, will be at the secondary level. And we're going to try, and so when we finish this round of staff reduction, our secondary schools are going to look a lot more like secondary schools across the state already look. If you are a teacher in Broken Arrow and you're teaching high school English, you're probably seeing somewhere between 150 and 160 kids a day. If you're teaching algebra at Jinx, you're seeing 150, 160 kids a day. If you're teaching American history, or world history, or government in Owasso, you're seeing 150 to 160 kids a day. And we're going to look a lot more like that as we prepare for next year's budget. Don't like that? It means that we'll probably, we'll have to take a really long, hard look at courses that don't have a high enrollment in them. We have, you know, we have classes, maybe only 12 kids are enrolled because it's a kind of a unique class that kids want to take, and we've been happy in the past to offer that to them. But we probably won't have that kind of class next year. You're going to see that our classes are generally going to have, you know, 24 to 25 kids in a class, and that's what our school day is going to look like.
The governor has proposed rainy day funds for both education and prison. Is, in your opinion, from a monetary standpoint, is that viable, or is that something we shouldn't do?
No, I think we should. I think the state, there are a couple of things that the state is obligated to pay for. The law says the state shall pay the health insurance for teachers. And so some of this rainy day money, I believe, will be used for health insurance. So that means that instead of the district having to take $190,000 out of our pocket and spend it on health insurance, the state will pay for all of it. So that's, that will be a cut that maybe we don't have, that we don't have to make this year, that we don't have to take out of our savings account to cover. So that'll be good. And then the other, and what I have not heard about the education part of that is whether or not the rest of that money, I think it's $57 million that's going to Common Ed, is all of that, is that 57, is it health insurance and avaloreum reimbursement fund? Because we also have something we do here in Oklahoma, and that we offer an incentive program to business and industry. And part of that incentive is, is that for a certain number of years, the state will pay your property taxes. So there's, Ponca City Public Schools receives a lot of avaloreum reimbursement funding because we have a really good economic development authority here, and they're always working with our businesses to help them expand their equipment and expand their employees. And so they, in order to do that, they help them with their property taxes. That fund is about $45 million short. And so I think that some of this funding, the rainy day money is going to go into that fund. If it does, that's great for schools like Ponca City and really schools, places like Blackwell and Newkirk that have a lot of wind farms now. So it will help keep those districts in good financial condition, or look better. I mean, good's not, nobody's in good financial condition right now. If part of that $57 million is to go to pay for this latest cut we've had in state aid, then for schools like Ponca, we have to then be worried about the avaloreum money. Because, you know, if, for us, that's about $500,000. So if that avaloreum fund is not full, then if it's not made whole, then that's money we'll lose that not, that doesn't touch everybody in the state the same. So we're waiting to see where that money is, whether or not it's state aid and health insurance, or health insurance and avaloreum. If it's not avaloreum dollars, then obviously, schools like Ponca City and others have to go back to the Capitol and say, "We've got to have our avaloreum money." You know, because you're, you've already figured it into the formula, you've given us less state aid because you thought we were going to get this avaloreum reimbursement money. If we don't get that, then we've got a huge hole that we have to fill.
Not talking necessarily about teachers, but about programs that could be cut. Do school districts, local school districts have the option of outside funding to keep from cutting programs?
They do, and we may look at those kinds of things. You know, one of the things that we've done for years, and it's not a lot of money, but as you well know, WBBC doesn't pay a fee to broadcast our ballgames. We consider that to be a community service. We may look at doing something like that. Can we pick up some revenue to help offset some cuts we're going to make to the athletic department? We've had, I was in a meeting in Tulsa on Monday with superintendents from Jinx, Broken Arrow, Owasso, and we had a discussion, Tulsa Public was there. Do we start charging students a fee to pay athletics, to play athletics? Some states do that. You know, there's a part of me that just kind of, I just don't know that I, especially when you look at the economic circumstances that some of our kids come from, they can't afford $150 to play sports in the Ponca City schools. And the other part of that is, our parents are already, I mean, they may not be paying directly, but they're doing lots of fundraising for basketball and football and baseball and softball and orchestra and band. So we already have public community support going into those programs, whether we charge a fee or whether we, you know, do a fundraiser or not. Now, that doesn't mean that we may have to go to those booster clubs and say, "You know what? We need the football booster club to pick up all the transportation costs associated with the football team." That rather than the athletic department paying for the bus driver and the fuel, we need the booster club to do that because we're cutting the athletic department back 40%. So we're looking at all that stuff. It's all on the table. We've had discussions. We actually had a discussion this past week about, do we end school early? We meet the statute, you know, we go to school more days than we're required to by state law. So we could end the school year early. If we do that, how much money does it save us? Now, it makes some kids really happy, you know, but I'm not sure how happy that'll make moms and dads. And the truth is, it's kind of like you hear a lot of discussion about a four-day week, whether you have a four-day week, whether you shut school day early. Anytime that you lessen the number of days of school that you have, the savings from that is not in teaching salaries and not because we have a negotiated agreement that says what we pay our teachers, and we can't deviate from that. It doesn't affect salaries for administrators, it doesn't affect, I mean, I work every, I work 200, it doesn't matter how long the school year is, I work, you know, I work 260 days a year. What it does affect is the people who can least afford it. It affects our bus drivers, it affects our teacher assistants, it affects our child nutrition workers. Those are the people who bear the brunt of those kinds of schemes where you cut back the number of days, days of school that you have. Now, the plus side of that is, if we end school early this year, that means you're more likely to have a job next year. And if we shorten our calendar next year, at least you've got a job next year. Most of our folks work for us because of health insurance. It's not because we pay great sums of money to support personnel. So, you know, I think, again, but, again, why am I having that conversation? I have kids that need to be in school. I have kids that need to be educated. I have kids that need to be taught to read, to write, to do math, they need to practice their band instrument, they need to practice their orchestra instrument. They need to do those things. We ought to be, the conversation in Oklahoma ought to be adding days of school, not cutting days of school. But that's where we are. We're having to have those kinds of conversations. And it just, I, you know, I've been a superintendent now for 22 years. And budget ups and downs are a part of it. You don't like it. And it's always frustrating in this state because you don't think we ever have as much money as we need. And I think anything, if you look at anything that talks about school funding and where we rank across the nation, I don't, I don't, I don't think a reasonable person could say we have the money that we need to educate kids. But I never thought I would seriously have a conversation about cutting the number of school days that we have, or a serious conversation about charging kids to participate in extracurricular program, or a serious conversation about, well, we have to end the gifted program the 1st of March because we don't have enough money to continue it throughout the rest of the school year. This stuff is just crazy. It's just crazy. And here's the deal. I have a little button, and I didn't wear it today, if I, I should have thought to wear it. It says, "Education cuts never heal." And that's because when you, when you put 25 kids in a class instead of 20, those students are not getting the same quality of education they would have normally get, and you will never make up for that. When you put 150 kids, when you tell, when you make, when you say a high school teacher, English teacher, is going to have 150 kids that she's going to serve, and she's going to grade 150 papers, she's not grading those 150 papers with the same critical eye that she's grading 120 papers or 110 papers. You just can't, you can't expect people to give, to, we're human beings, and how much of themselves can that one person give? How much can they give? Students do not get the same amount of attention when a teacher has 28 kids in a classroom as they do when she has 20 kids in a classroom or 19 kids in a classroom. Now, and especially when you think about something like a calculus class, where, I mean, that's pretty hard stuff. And if I'm a teacher and I've got 15 kids, 15 kids in that classroom, then I can work with those students more individually than I can if I have 20 or 25. The conversation, and so those kids are not, they may get a credit in the class, but they're not going to get the same individual attention, they're not going to get the same individualized instruction, they're not going to get what they ought to have. And you can't make that up the next year. That is something they've lost forever. And it's just so, in my mind, and I, and I know that I don't think about things the same way everybody else did, does, but I just think it's such a shame for our state. It's just such a hit. It's hurting our future. It, again, it's just going to put Oklahoma further behind those other states that are maintaining their commitment to educating their children. And we were behind anyway because we already didn't spend as much, we didn't provide the programs, we didn't, you know, so we're already behind. We're just digging ourselves in a bigger hole. And I, and I don't know why the leadership of this state can't figure out that if you want to pull Oklahoma up, if you want to have more people that are better educated, that if you want to have companies that come here because we have a skilled workforce and we have a well-educated workforce, then you've got to put more money into the schools of this state. I saw a study the other day where Stanford University, which is not a liberal university of administration imagination, they studied, I think it was like 200,000 individuals who went to school in the 80s and 90s. And what they looked at is, they looked at states that had increased education spending by 10%, okay? And they looked at the outcomes for students who grew up in poverty in those states that had 10% more spent on their education than those states that didn't. And the results of, of all those factors that are better factors, not being on welfare, getting a college education, graduating from high school, having a skill, you know, getting, getting married and staying married, you know, all those kinds of things, that not having children out of wedlock, just all that stuff that is quality of life stuff. Those students that, that were in states that spent 10% more on their education had a 17% better life quality outcome than those students who were in states that they didn't make the investment. And, you know, you just think about that. If you think about being able to improve the quality of somebody's life by 17%, that's a huge difference in somebody's life. And, and I just, I just worry about the future of our state.
What is your opinion of David Boren's sales tax proposal?
Well, you know, I had the opportunity to be at the, the, the meeting, and I act, when he came to Ponca City, I actually had the honor of introducing President Boren. It's one of those things you never think you're going to get a chance to do in life. And what, Governor Boren, President Boren, Senator Boren, whatever you want to call him, what he said was, you know, "Sales tax would not be his first choice. It's not mine either. My choice would be, is that we look at the entire tax code in Oklahoma, and we have income tax and sales taxes and property taxes that provide us with the money we need to provide the services that the state needs to provide." But what President Boren said is, is that his group, you know, these guys are smart people, right? And so they surveyed. And so they, they knew that they needed something to raise funding for education that, number one, was bipartisan and two, could pass. Because he knew, the legislature's not going to do anything. And that's another story. And so they polled an income tax increase, they polled property tax increases, they polled a sales tax increase. And the sales tax increase was supported by 65% of the people in the poll, and it was supported by 65% of the Republicans polled and 65% of the Democrats polled. So it is the only measure that has bipartisan strong support. We, if we don't do this, what are we going to do? That's my question to anybody that's in opposition. I understand that city governments, the city, the state municipal league doesn't want this to happen. I understand their position. But my question to them is, what is your proposal? Because cities are dependent on well-educated workforces. You're not going to grow, I mean, the best hope for Ponca City to grow is for us to have a dedicated, committed, educated workforce. If you're not going to do it with sales tax, what are you going to do it with? And I've not heard anybody yet that has a better proposal. So I am 100% behind President Boren. I'm also 100% behind Governor Fallon's proposal to eliminate the double deduction for state income taxes that we have. I'm 100% behind her proposal to start charging sales tax on things, on industries and businesses that do not pay sales taxes today. I'm 100% behind her proposal to make, to find a way to tax internet sales in this state. I was in a meeting the other day, and they said that on the, on the two, on two, they did a check of tax returns from 2014, only 4% of the people who filed income taxes reported the use tax. Now, the use tax is a tax that we're supposed to pay when we buy stuff on the internet from companies that don't have a presence in Oklahoma, so we don't collect sales taxes. Come on. You're going to tell me only 4% of the people in the state of Okla, look, I know that's not right. I know that's not right. And so obviously, the use tax, people aren't filing their taxes. And I'll be honest with you, Phil, I sat down and thought about that, and I thought, "Did I file my use tax in 2014?" I don't know. I'm going to go look, and, I mean, I don't, I don't know. And because we don't think about it, right? It's, we're supposed to self-report it. I don't know what my wife spends on internet stuff. Because all my wife does is buy stuff and tell me she's going to send most of it back. So I never know exactly what she's spending, you know? It's a great scheme, right? That's why women, that's why women like to shop on the internet.
Be careful here. Hey, one more thing before we let you go. The Hutchins Memorial Auditorium is coming down. Is it too early to give us an idea if, if that area is going to be for usage for the Ponca City School?
Well, we have had, you know, obviously, the city council has made the decision to tear it down. And they directed the city manager to talk to us about that. And we've been in conversations with Craig Stevenson, and we're work, we're trying, as we speak right now, we're working on an agreement that would allow us to, to take control of that property and to place our and to, uh, place our concert hall, uh, in that setting. You know, the one thing I heard more than anything else when we had the discussion about the concert hall last fall was that, you know, if I heard it once, I heard it a hundred times. Oh, we wish it could be in the park as opposed to north of the football stadium. You know, uh, that has always been a location for, uh, for musical kind of programs. It works for us because it's closer to the high school. So it's better for us. It's also better for us because it's less expensive for us to build on that land because there's not as much slope in the property. There's also a lot of the utilities are already there, so we don't have to pay to, to run sewer lines and power lines and that kind of stuff. And we wouldn't have to build a parking lot because there's already parking there. So it's a big plus for the school district. Obviously, there's some things we have to work out in the city and the, in the school district have to agree to that. If we were to do that, we would some, find some way to honor, uh, James Hutchins. You know, my initial thought is, and this is just me, I haven't talked to the board about this at all. But, um, you know, I'm kind of thinking, um, James Hutchins Memorial Concert Hall. You know, so there's still a name. Or we might, we may just call it The Hutch. Because that's what everybody calls that property, right? They just say The Hutch. We just put a big sign that says The Hutch across the top. And maybe that might be how we preserve that memory. But, so we're sure open to that. Uh, we think it's a, a great idea. And, uh, we're, we're, we're enthusiastic. Um, I, you know, you know, I was a part of all that controversy several years ago when we tried to do something and there were people who wanted to save The Hutchin. But, you know, the reality is anybody that's spent any time in there knows that that building has served its purpose. And the city, quite frankly, if they were gonna put millions of dollars in it to fix it, they would have already done it. They're not gonna do that. So, you know, let's, um, I'm in that camp that says, even, even, even if we don't, you get the property. Tear it down and clear the space and just have park space there. Because right now, it's, it's not a viable facility.
Thanks for your time so much, Dr. David Pennington, and have a great spring break. That's this month's board wrap-up.